That's what they're not any smarter than you.
Well, I just got fancy stuff now.
It's a level of integrity.
Can push all kinds of buttons.
Right, right, right.
Well, you really hit it, Poy.
Thirty seconds. Pat Anderson? Yes, okay, good. Good evening and welcome to the November fourth, two thousand and twenty-four Board of Commissioners' regular meeting. The time is six P M. I would request that you please silence your cellphones and all other electronic devices. At this time, I would ask Dr. Tracy Anderson of the Moving Forward Ministries to deliver our invocation, and Commissioner James Dutton to lead the pledge to the flag.
Let us pray. Eternal most gracious Father, we come now just thanking you, Father, for enabling us, Father, just to give us wisdom for the Board of Commissions, the leadership of Griffin County and Spalding. Father God, we come now and just give them guidance, Father, in the decisions in which they may, Father, and just give them encouragement, Father, when they are discouraged. And we bless the citizens of this great city and town. In Christ Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Our pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item number four, presentations and proclamation, fiftieth anniversary celebration of Reverend Ronald K. Adams. This evening, we celebrate the fiftieth anniversary of Reverend Ronald K. Adams, and I would ask Commissioner Johnson if she would please read the proclamation.
And just so you know, Pastor Adams does send his regret for not being here this evening. Proclamation in recognition of fifty years of dedicated service, Reverend Ronald K. Adams. Whereas Reverend Ronald K. Adams, a native of Griffin, Georgia, and son of Reverend and Mrs. J. H. Ozell Adams, has devoted his life to faith and community service. And whereas Reverend Adams was nurtured in faith by Mount Calvary Baptist Church in Milner, Georgia, and Mount Zion Baptist Church in Griffin, Georgia, and answered his calling to ministry in nineteen seventy-four, being licensed to preach at Mount Calvary Baptist Church under the leadership of the late Reverend Cleveland Freeman, Jr., and ordained in sep- excuse me, in December nineteen seventy-six. And whereas Reverend Adams has served as the senior pastor of Arcadia Missionary Baptist Church in Griffin, Georgia, since two thousand and ten, and has previously served as pastor of Southside Baptist Church in Atlanta, Ellenwood, Georgia, Pleasant Grove Ministry Missionary Baptist Church in La Zilla, Georgia, and Mount Calvary Missionary Baptist Church in Milner, Georgia, as well as youth pastor at Unity Grove Baptist Church in Locust Grove, Georgia. And whereas Reverend Adams is a graduate of Griffin High School and has pursued further education in Morehouse College, Atlanta Christian College, Carver Bible College, and a denominational theological center. And whereas Reverend Adams has held significant roles, including president of Griffin Spalding County Ministerial Alliance, sixth district secretary, lecturerial, and Christian education instructor for the General Missionary Baptist Convention for Georgia Incorporated, and parliamentarian, Christian education educator, instructor, and executive board member of the Middle Georgia Orthodox Baptist Association. And whereas Reverend Adams has balanced his ministry with a career in education, serving in various capacities within the Griffin Spalding County Schools, and later as a restorative justice specialist and resource coordinator at Atlanta Municipal Court, and as a public relations director for Alliance Healthcare and Hospice. And whereas Reverend Adams has been an active community leader, serving on the Board of Directors for the Urban Outreach Association, and as a member of the N double A C P, the Griffin Spalding County Citizens and Improvement League, and the Spalding County Democratic Committee, and has led significant community initiatives such as renaming the Griffin Barnesville Bypass in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King, Jr. And whereas Reverend Adams has demonstrated a profound commitment to missions, both locally and internationally, including work in Haiti, South Korea, Nassau, and Canada, and has been recognized with numerous awards and commendations for his service. And whereas Reverend Adams is a devoted husband to Estonia, Hapers, and a loving father to Alexis Janon Adams Ababta, Rona Kalisa Adams, and grandfather of Fatma Abduta, the second. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Spalding County Board of Commissioners hereby recognizes and honors Reverend K. Ronald K. Adams for his fifty years of dedicated service to his faith, his community, and his family, and extends its deepest gratitude for his unwavering commitment and contributions.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
Approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero. Thank you. Motion carries. Item number two. The two thousand and twenty-four Seventh Annual Sheriff's Citizens Academy. I would invite Sheriff Darrell Dix forward to recognize the graduation of the Seventh Annual Sheriff's Citizens Academy. Wonderful Sheriff Dix.
This class was rather large this year. I want to say we had about thirty students that enrolled and completed the ten-week program that covers every aspect of what the sheriff's office does. And we talked about budgeting, we talked about operations, we talked about the jail special operations, just everything that we do. And it was a great class. We had a lot of participation, some great questions, some great ideas posed, and we ate some great food. Each night is part of it. We use a local restaurant to provide a meal, kind of helping spur some of the local economy and everything. And it went really, really well this year. Very proud of the class and what they did and the input and the involvement that they had in it. So ladies and gentlemen, if y'all would come up. We did certificate presentations since last week, since it is such a large class. But if I could get all of them to come up here in the middle, and if y'all could come down and get a picture made, we'd really appreciate it. What do y'all like to say? A check of one thousand one hundred and twenty dollars goes to the Junior Duty Program and some of other our U T M's has been donated by this year's class. Anybody like to say something real quick?
I was just on behalf of the class, I'd just like to thank the sheriff's office and all of the people that work for him for their generosity to our community, for them taking the time to do such a fantastic presentation to the community, to teach us that, you know, when your mama says, "I'm gonna tell that sheriff on you," that that's okay, because our guys are out there to help us and protect us. I would encourage each of you guys, if you've not taken this class, to do it. It's fantastic. It really opens your eyes to what our officers have to go through every day when they put on that uniform, and even when they got back to eat tonight. So we were blessed by everything that we got to experience. We were fed really well by local businesses in Spalding County. And we got fried. And the reason we take the picture today is because obviously a man decided last week that we're gonna fly before we took our pictures. So all our hair was way too long. So basically, thank you, Sheriff, thank you. While I have a forum, we want to have a county government class.
We got it coming. Yeah. Let's just, let's say, if he didn't put down with the partner.
Let's just take a minute while everybody who wants to leave can go ahead and depart, get out of the way. If you're departing, if you'd go ahead and please step on out in the hall. Thank you. Item number three, presentation by staff. At this time, we have a presentation by the staff. Dr. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is my privilege to recognize a number of people who are in the room this evening. And as I call your name, if you would, please step forward for the presentation. Mr. Rodney McCord.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Afternoon, Rodney.
My name is Rodney McCord. I'm here tonight on Rodney McCord's official business. For the last, what, three, twelve years, we have had the honor of having in our community Rita Celeste Johnson as commissioner, and she will not be seeking a new term. She was my commissioner, and Mr. Bowlin is my commissioner. So between he and hopefully the next commissioner, I'll be calling them instead of calling Ms. Johnson. So tonight, I want to present to Ms. Johnson a plaque, just a small, I left my thing, but a little small memento. And it says, "We hereby honor Rita Celeste Johnson in recognition of your service to this community as a Spalding County Commissioner from two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and twenty-four. A passion for excellence, sustainability, customer service, community service, innovation, exceeding expectations, and most of all, public service." Congratulations, Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you.
Ms. Rita. Ms. Rita, if you would, just stand right there. Mr. Ricky Taylor.
I don't have a complaint tonight, as usual. My name is Rick Taylor. And I wanted to also take my time just to thank Ms. Rita Johnson for her service and her years of giving it to Spalding County. And I went back and read your bio that you had online, and I saw some things there that, you know, most people read it and they just read it. But when I read it, I thought about it for a while, and I saw that you was a young girl in school trying to do better than others. You won a scholarship for college, you was inducted into the Athletic Hall of Fame, and that's commendable. But it told me something about Ms. Rita Johnson, that you're a lady that tries, wants to put forth effort to do better than others and do your best at it, and you've done it. And I want to say this, too, that I saw this a young girl there, and I saw a businesswoman come out of that bio as you begin to do your own business with state farm insurance. And that's great, and I'm so thankful that you serve our community that way. But also, I see that you're a person that when somebody asks you a question, you can find them an answer. When somebody has a problem, you'll help them look for the solution that fits them. And I thank you for that. I thank you for your service in Spalding County. And I saw a lady that was a young girl, turned to a businesswoman, but turned out to be a lady of integrity, and we thank you for that. We thank you for everything you've ever done for Spalding County, and thank you also for being my neighbor. God bless.
Reginald Watts.
You just thought it was over.
Greetings, everyone. When we moved to that third district in two thousand and eighteen, and I called you with my first problem. When I tell you guys, she made sure she fits that problem, and she'll do everything she can to get the problem to fit. So I thank you for that, Ms. Rita, and we became friends, and I learned so much from you. And I just want to say that on behalf of the entire Spalding County, we're gonna miss you, and you did a great job. And between me or Mr. Teller, we got some big shoes to fill. So I thank you, and man, just good luck.
Zach Holmes. Mr. Holmes.
Good evening, everyone.
Amen.
I wrote a few notes down. I wanted to let Ms. Rita know what she owed me. First, I would like to tell you, I wrote these notes down because I didn't want this to seem like I were making remarks at a funeral for your eulogy. You're not going anywhere, but I know you're still gonna be in our community. But I want to thank whoever put it together for us to come and make these remarks, to give us this opportunity to give you your flowers while you're still living amongst us. But I wouldn't turn down the opportunity to recognize and acknowledge my friend, whom I refer to affectionately as D Three. I've come to know and refer to Rita as a friend since she has become a part of this community. This friendship started and grew after I saw that she wanted to be a servant in this community. I kept seeing her at different functions and events. Then I noticed she knew some of the same people that I did. I saw this because a lot of them let me know she cared about the community just as I did. And eventually, she ran for the commissioner's seat in District Three. After my friend Johnny decided not to run again, I just didn't know what we were gonna get because Johnny and I, we were such great friends. But I became real good friends with Ms. Rita, and I thank Rita for how she represented District Three and this community, and for how we communicated and worked together to serve District Three. And I came to be, I guess, I called myself her go-to guy because whenever others didn't show up, she would always give D Three a call, and I would always be at her beck and call. Therefore, I say to my friend, "Job well done, and I look forward to your next service chapter." And I say in my departing from this podium, as we always say to each other, "Rise up."
Wanda Chronic Howell. Wanda Chronic Howell.
I'm Wanda Howell, excuse me. And in a lifetime of unforgettable business leaders, Rita is the most unforgettable. So when I was asked to do this, I thought, there's no way I can't come speak for my amazing friend. The main way I have gotten to know Rita is through our affiliation with American Business Women's Association. She joined back in two thousand and eight, and sixteen years later, she has been president numerous times, woman of the year. She has headed almost every committee. She's membership chair, works on the scholarship committee very diligently. And it's been such an honor to get to see how she works with people. And when I was thinking about what I wanted to share tonight, I thought, you know, one of my best lessons I learned from Rita, one night we were having a board meeting, and I guess everybody was tired, and it just kind of digressed into maybe negative things. And Rita let us all know that she did not want to be a member of a group that conducted themselves in that way. And I thought, you know, she's really right. And so I think she helped lift us up and remind us we were there to do business, and we were there to be positive. And I think it was a good lesson, and I think that's probably the lesson her life brings the most to me, is she's always looking for the good in others and always trying to bring out good in people, and does not like to focus on negativism. And I think that's a lesson we've all gained from you, Rita. And I appreciate so much what you do for all of us.
Suzanne Cummings.
Good evening. So I'm so happy tonight to come and have an opportunity to speak about Rita. She and I share many of the same professional and social circles, so we see each other about town in meetings and things all the time. And I've always been so impressed by her poise, her grace, and her professionalism. And like Ms. Wanda said, that's proof of it. That's your grace in those kind of situations, saying we're not gonna have the negativity. That's not what we're here for. She's committed to serving our community, and she stands as a powerful role model, not only for our future leaders, but really for the women in our community. I mean, they really have someone to look up to and to follow. Your time as service as a commissioner is ending, but I'm sure your service to our community will continue. And I know that your presence is gonna be missed here, but your influence is gonna live on through the people that you have inspired to do great things. So thank you.
Johnny McDaniel.
First of all, I want to thank the commission for allowing this flexibility to be able to take a minute to honor Commissioner Johnson. I don't know that you remember this or not, but we first became acquainted at the Kiwanis Club. And I'm sure I'm a less memorable character than you are, so you probably don't remember that. But we didn't really get to know each other until after she accomplished something that I couldn't do. She beat Mr. Twenty-three in an election. And I was always be a little bit envious of that commissioner. But I'm not sure who opened up the line of communication, but I'm gonna take credit for it. And we have had an opportunity to develop a friendship over the twelve years that she served as commissioner of District Three. And one thing I really appreciated is that she didn't mind calling me and didn't mind me calling her anytime. And the other thing I appreciated is she respected my opinion. Not everybody does, but Commissioner Johnson respected my opinion. And on the other hand, I respected the decisions that she made. And we talked frequently and just had developed a friendship over that time. And if it's not gonna be me, I'm just really glad it's you, Rita. But you won't always be my commissioner, but you'll always be my friend. And one thing I want to say to you is, on behalf of the third district, for a job well done, serving us and serving the community of Spalding County, I salute you. But to Rita, I want to say thank you for being my friend.
Beth Horn.
Good evening. Rita, it's been a pleasure getting to know and work with you on many occasions. Y'all excuse me. I'm an event coordinator, so I stand in the back of the room. I never get up front, so I have a hard time. So excuse me. You have been one that has searched Spalding County for many years and have always kept Spalding County foremost in your mind and in your heart. I've had the opportunity to hear you speak at UGA Griffin several years ago and learn where your dedication, hard work, and sense of service came from. When we have had the opportunity to work together on different projects, those traits are present in all you do and say. One can always tell how much you love Spalding County. Thank you for your faith and trust in me when you reappointed me to the Parks and Leisure Advisory Council to continue doing good for Spalding County and to always keep what's best for our residents in the forefront. I wish you good luck and happiness in your future endeavors, and thank you for all you have given to Spalding County in service, hard work, and dedication of your many years. Thank you.
Kathleen Smith.
First of all, I want to thank everyone here for giving me the chance to tell Rita what I really think about her. It's been my incredible pleasure to call this woman Rita Johnson, one of my best friends for over seven years. I could personally tell you stories that demonstrate her incredible generosity as I've seen it in action with both her time and her money in both community service and personal. in both community service and personally through her friends and their families. Rita lives the tagline for State Farm, "Good neighbor." One thing most I love about Rita completely, and other people have mentioned this also, is how she demonstrates her incredibly strong faith through her actions, not through oratory and certainly not through diatribe. She's honest, creative, reliable, with a song, strong sense of integrity. Today's probably the first time I've ever had a chance to tell Rita what I really think. Instead, over the years, she and I have worked together in the community through American Business Women's Association, through the Chamber Commerce Board, and she serves as an honored board member at my hospital, Wellstar Spalding Regional Hospital. So I have enjoyed telling her what the men and women I have worked with in this community say about her to me through all my work with her. I've never heard one disparaging remark about Rita, ever. I've worked with bank presidents to board members, to all just folks. And the things I have heard them say about Rita have been, Rita's a great leader in this community. Rita's one of the smart ones. Rita is fair to everyone. Rita makes decisions based on the best for this community and she can tell her love of the community. And Rita has been such an asset in this community. I've heard every one of these statements about my friend. So Rita, I know so many people in this community are saddened to lose your wise and fair views on this council, but I know you're not stepping away. You're always gonna be invested and supportive in this community. So I'm just gonna say, "Great job, well done." And it's about damn time, let's travel.
Dr. Burks?
Well, my friend, before I speak on my behalf, I'm gonna read something that Daoud Amin sent to us. He was, he hate that he couldn't be here. And I also want to tell you that Kelly Carmichael, she is very instrumental in all of this and she hates that she couldn't be here. So on behalf of Daoud Amin, Commissioner Rita Johnson, let me begin by sincerely apologizing for my absence. The genesis of our friendship was your campaign for county commissioner. During this time, it has grown and blossomed to be one of the greatest respect and admiration. The citizens of Spalding County have benefited tremendously from your leadership. You should be proud of many things, from looking after our youth, to taking care of our seniors, public safety, first responders, job creation, and increasing the tax base. Also, I would be remiss not to mention all the things you were a part of when we look at the quality of life and cultural advancement. You are a true public servant. Thank you for your sacrifice and service, and may our Creator continue to bless you in all of your pursuits. Your friend, Daoud Amin. And I'll make sure you get this. Now for me. I got to know you, I guess, towards the latter part, I said, "Oh, you got me, and then you left me." But I know you as a friend because one of the most trying times in my life, you stood with me and you...
Okay.
You made sure that I held my head up high. You made sure that I took ownership of things that I needed to own, but also made me realize that life's not over, that you have so much to give and so many times, and I'm sorry I'm gonna be crying, my God. But anyway, you let me know that you were my friend regardless of anything. And I've gotten to know you very well in the community through ABWA, just through our girlfriend time and just through your wisdom, even when I wanted to not see things in a way that they really were. You were there for me. So I want to say this, and also, I want to do this on behalf of Spalding County. Did you ever know that you're a hero? You're everything we would like to be. Now we can fly higher than an eagle 'cause you are the wind beneath our wings. Did you ever know that you're a hero? You're everything that we would like to be. Now we can fly higher than an eagle 'cause you are the wind beneath Spalding Wings.
Stephanie Wyndham?
How the heck do you follow that?
I know it.
So there are so many things that can be said about Commissioner Rita Johnson, but since I understand that this is not a roast, I will only say that she has served her community and her constituents well. She's been a voice of reason and has taken the mandate of her election to office to heart. I know that she's gonna remain involved in the community and won't be a stranger. Man, I should be crying. I do have to say that I often take my fashion cues from Commissioner Johnson and I may have to consult her from time to time on my wardrobe. And also that she leaves some very large, high-hill chutes to fill.
Mr. Flowers Taylor?
I have a mic right here. So first of all, I want to say, congratulations, you're actually getting out. In a nice way. But I, I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you so much for being willing to, to listen and to understand. You have been a very good friend to me and a very good work, work wife, work colleague. I want to thank you, and I'm pretty sure my daughter and my sister would thank you, for helping me to stop being an angry black woman. Some of y'all know what that means. But it was because of Rita that, that I was able to step back and see that everything that I thought people said wasn't about me. And she is, she can be with people in, on Bankhead Highway, or she can be with people in Buckhead. It, it doesn't matter. She, and she's not a chameleon, you know that she's there when she's there. But I just want to say, "Thank you." I don't want you to go, but I want you to have a good life. That's it.
Mr. Chair, on behalf of staff of Spalding County, we would like to present this gavel to Commissioner Rita Johnson and say thank you for all that you've done for us.
Walk on down, we're gonna get a picture of all this. Up and down.
We got one of the good friends here. Yeah.
All right, I got two cameras, we're gonna do it. Ready? One, two, three.
Can I, can I say?
Yeah.
I'm not gonna take long because we got, we got business to conduct here. This was very impromptu. I didn't expect this. But this is just like this county and this community to do the things that they do. They, they show up and show out, that's what we do. I'm gonna miss being a commissioner. I'm gonna miss the people that I work with, these, these people here that I flusset sometimes, but I love them. Staff including, all the department heads. The sheriff is here. I remember when you were elected sheriff, you have just done many things for this community, can I thank you? All the departments, I think of our warden, of course, I think of our beloved fire department that I've, I've roped other fire trucks with for the last 12 years. Chief Polk, Chief Byrd, staff, Erica, Cheryl, Stephanie, our county attorney, I would be without you. But I want to thank the citizens. And I want to thank District 3 in particular, of course, you know, they, they did elect me and they trusted me, which is, which was a big deal. To do this job is very tough to do. There's a lot of tough decisions that you have to make. Sometimes, you know, people love you and sometimes they don't. But my goal in all of this was to make sure that you may not always agree, but my goal is at least you understand. And we have to find a common goal is what we need to do to move this county forward. We live in a very, very wonderful place here in Spalding County. And we've got so much more that, opportunity ahead of this that I know this board is gonna take care of for us. So I want to say thank you all for coming out and supporting me and showing your love to me, everyone that's here. It means everything to me. And I want you to do the same, believe it or not, for these commissioners as well, when I leave. And for the new Mr. Taylor, Reginald Watts, whoever District 3 is, I know you're gonna represent us well. Okay? And I'm always here to help you if you need me. All right, Mr. Phone Call Away. And like they said, I may be stepping down from this post, but I'm not going anywhere. So thank you for giving me my flowers tonight. I received them, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you all, it was awesome, thank you, thank you.
Hard to follow anything with that, but item number five, citizen comments. Speakers must sign up prior to the meeting and provide their names, addresses, and the topic they wish to discuss. Speakers must direct your comments to the board and not to individual commissioners or to the audience. Personal disagreements with individual commissioners or county employees are not a matter of public concern and personal attacks will not be tolerated. The chairman has the right to limit your comments in the interest of disposing of the county's business in an efficient and respectful manner. Speakers will be allotted three minutes to speak on their chosen topics as they relate to matters pertaining to the jurisdiction of the Board of Commissioners. No questions will be asked by any of the commissioners during citizen comments. Outbursts from the audience will not be tolerated. Common courtesy and civility are expected at all times during the meeting. No speakers will be permitted to speak more than three minutes or more than once unless the board votes to suspend this rule. Dr. Ledbetter, have we got anybody to speak tonight?
Yes, sir, we have Michelle DruGaz.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. Michelle DruGaz, 312 Whispering Pines Way, Griffin, Georgia 3022G. There are 4,400 homes coming into District 5 over the next few years and that does not count the already established homes or any other developments that may also be proposed. Jordan Hill and Timon Road are both main corridors for vehicles and trucks to reach 1941 from Highway 155 and to reach Highway 20 from Griffin. Think of the amount of car and truck traffic which will be using Timon Road. For the safety of the residents, Spalding County must plan ahead and address road improvements before any of these developments are built. In the photos, look at the crown of Jordan Hill Road at the Timon Road four-way stop. Driving southbound, when you reach the four-way stop, you cannot even see the other side of Jordan Hill Road. You cannot see that the two sides do not match up and there is a jog in the road to connect the two, the other side of Jordan Hill. This is a dangerous situation which a roundabout would fix. Driving eastbound on Jordan, on Timon Road, you come around a curve and suddenly the four-way stop is right there and it's difficult to see that there is a stop ahead. People have been driving right through the stop, not even pausing. Traffic is moving at 50 miles per hour to 65 miles per hour on Timon Road. It is a dangerous intersection. There have already been too many accidents occurring at just this one intersection. Can you imagine what the traffic will be like when additional 4,400 homes are built, plus two commercial developments? A year ago, there was such a severe accident at this intersection, the victims had to be lifelighted out. This year, in the picture that you see, I witnessed the aftermath of an accident at the same four-way stop where a car was turned over onto its side. Look at that photo. I've given you copies of the sheriff's intersection accident report and the Georgia State Patrol accident report from the Timon Road and Jordan Hill Road's four-way stop. How many more accidents have to occur before this commission addresses the safety of the Timon and Jordan Hill Road intersection? Commissioners, you need to plan ahead for all of the development coming into District 5. Road improvement needs to be completed before the developments are built. For safety and traffic flow reasons, a roundabout needs to be built to replace the four-way stop at Timon and Jordan Hill Roads. Henry County and Coeida County both plan ahead for development and build the roundabouts before the extra traffic even begins. Commissioners, you need to improve the roads to support... Commissioners, you need to improve the roads to support the incoming traffic and to provide safe passage for the senior drivers in Spalding County. The safety of the citizens needs to be a priority for the future of Spalding County. We ask that this commission be proactive and include wider roads with shoulders for the high-traffic roads in Spalding County and roundabouts added to the intersections with the most traffic and accidents. Planning ahead and completing the needed infrastructure will ensure safe growth and safe travel in the county. T-SWAS dollars could be used to make this happen. Developers should complete the road improvements around the developments. Property taxes should not be raised when developers could offset the cost of road improvement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else?
No, sir.
Okay. Item six, minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to table the minutes. They are still in process.
All right. I understand there-
All three sets of the minutes.
Oh, okay. All three sets. Do I have a second? All right, I, um, motion and a second. Any discussion? Oh, excuse me. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero. Item number seven, new business. Consider the final forensic audit report. We had the opportunity to hear from, uh, RSM, the firm that completed our forensic audit report. Do I have any, a motion to approve? All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Yes, I think that, that it is appropriate for the county manager to explain to the public what the summary is of this.
Yes, absolutely. Be more than happy to. I, I would call the attention to, sorry.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Are we good? Okay.
This is a discussion.
Uh, I, I would call the attention of the board and our neighbors to the executive summary that's listed on the screen, and specifically to, uh, paragraph number two. The procedures as was outlined by Mr. Chris, uh, I'm a cough. I come, I come off, please forgive me for mispronouncing his name. Indicated that the procedures that they used for our forensic audit did not identify any fraud or misappropriation of funds. Uh, there were a number of recommendations that are presented in the final document, uh, specifically about improving our procurement, our purchase card policy. Uh, that work is, uh, currently underway. Ms. Dai and Mr. Larry Wallace are working to bring the purchase card, uh, policy into compliance with state and federal grant funding. Uh, that will be completed, uh, i- if all goes well, by the end of the year. There were also some additional comments with respect to the purchase, uh, card process, specifically around providing, uh, receipts back to our administrative team. Uh, and that too is being addressed through this process. I would give, um, uh, kudos to RSM for the work that they've done over the last four and a half, five months. They have gone through a tremendous amount of information to assure, uh, our neighbors that we are using the money appropriately and that there, again, is no fraud or misappropriation of funds.
Ms. Quinn, is that good or not? Do you need more on that?
Uh, no. I just wanted to make sure that there was, if we, I mean, we hashed it out today, but to at least let the public know what the big, the end result is of that forensic audit.
Yeah, in a sense, they gave us some best practices where we could tweak a few things as far as, you know, P-cards and best practices, but they, they found, uh, a- again, this is what everyone needs to hear, right? And what we wanted to hear as well, and if there, if they hadn't found this, we would've gone into it, but they found no fraud or misappropriation. There is no stolen money, there is no hidden money, there is, you know, so, that's, that's what we were looking for.
And I would like to say also a thank you to the Board of Commissioners for moving us forward with a new ERP, our new software package, uh, that will provide for our, uh, our county the opportunity to see more transparency with the monies that we use. Uh, that software package will continue to be implemented. It will, uh, take us until at least, um, fall of next year for full implementation of that package because it is so robust and, and i- it's very thorough with how it presents the information back out to our community. Uh, but we are very much looking forward to implementation of that newer ERP software package, and I just wanna say thank you to the board.
Any other discussion?
Yeah.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero. Motion carries. Establish guidelines and regulations governing the use of Narcan by training personnel of Spalding County government. Up next on the agenda this evening, EMS Director Glenn Polk is asking for the Board of Commissioners to consider establishing guidelines and regulations that will govern the use of Narcan by training personnel, by trained personnel across Spalding County. Chief Polk, Chief Polk, I believe this is the response to the grant that the county received in compliance with the state law that requires us that we have Narcan available at our county-owned facilities. Is that correct?
That's correct. Qual- qualified county facilities.
Okay. Uh, let me have, first, let's get a demo, uh, motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Uh, uh, any comments from you before we, uh, vote?
Yes, sir. We, uh, we, uh, thankful for the support, and we tried to do this to offset this unmandated, um, calls to us, and, uh, we were very successful. Uh, we've started getting projects in, and with the approval of the policy that, uh, we've been working with Ms. Ms. Windham on, that, uh, we can move forward with the training and the personnel and, and get it installed in all of our buildings in compliance.
Speak to this a little bit, just to, so everybody understands what we're even talking about.
Absolutely. Um, so, back January of last year, our state legislator put into effect a mandate that we have Narcan available at all of our county-owned facilities. So what that means is we have a, um, a device sitting just out here, an AFib device, that helps people should they have a heart attack. Well, if someone walks in and they have, uh, they've taken a medication or a drug that causes them to have, uh, symptoms, uh, that are affiliated with Narcan, uh, medication, then we now have medication onsite and trained people on staff that are able to administer Narcan to support life. Uh, in all of the places where we have our defibrillators, um, we will have a Narcan, uh, product that will be managed by our EMA director and our, our fire personnel to ensure that they are, uh, not expired, uh, that they're readily available. And Glenn and his team are going to train personnel that work for Spalding County to administer that, uh, that medication. Uh, this is an unfunded mandate by the state of Georgia that we have to have this product here. Uh, but one of the things that I am very thankful for, uh, Chief Polk and Larry Wallace, they wrote a grant, and the state of Georgia has afforded us grant funding, uh, to purchase this medication. Not only did it purchase the medication, but, but it also purchased the holding, uh, devices that will be placed next to our defibrillators here in our facility at the annex. Uh, but we also have eighteen locations.
Twenty-five.
Oh, sorry, twenty-five locations where this medication will be housed across the county at our buildings.
Well, will all twenty-five locations have an AED?
All twenty-five locations have an AED currently.
They do, yes.
That, that's what makes them a, a qualified government building, is they, if they have an AED present, that's when they have to have the, the Narcan also available.
So, so I'm, I, I read through this, and I get it in terms of the training, but, I mean, literally, anybody can administer Narcan. You, you pop the thing and stick it in front of their nose. I understand that, and, but the average person doesn't know that you can dose one or two times if the person lets you.
Three times.
So I, I've never, twenty years of being a nurse, seen anybody get Narcan three times. You did.
No, no, I'm with you. It, it's just-
No, 'cause-
Almost once is all-
It pisses you off in the first place. And so if you give them a second dose, it really makes them mad. So, so, but I'm saying all that to say this, I understand that it's important, but just like we give, um, smoke detectors out, this needs to be a thing in every household. Or people need to have the ability to, um, get the short card and, and the Narcan, and just keep it there, 'cause... Okay, that's another whole story about drugs, but it never really goes bad. So, so, you know, you may have a child that's come over that's eating some at your house, but I, I just think that it's important, yes, that we make sure our people understand. But, you know, I hope we don't, well, we could have somebody up here that's intoxicated to that point, but generally, the problem is happening out there. And that's where we need to get the boxes, is in the hands of people at households and places where overd- overdoses occur. You know, they don't, they haven't made it to the hospital, they're overdosing at home, so, yeah, I, 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 I think the policy's good, um, in terms of what we need to do for the county, but, you know, anyb- anybody can pop the thing and stick it in front of somebody's nose. So, we want kids to know how to do that and know what is, so that's another whole story. But I'm just saying, I hope this is the beginning of the circle, and we need to grow that circle out in the community so as many people as possible will have access to Narcan at home.
Agree. Anybody else have a comment?
I, I'm just grateful that we have, uh, folks like you on our staff that are, can pop this kinda stuff out in a minute. Commissioner Johnson and I are up here going, isn't this the stuff you, it's like a needle, right? You stick a many-
Yeah, retarded.
But not only, not only do you know how to use it, can you train others in using it, but you can, you can create a whole policy for us to use it and man it. I'm just so proud of Spalding County for having awesome folks like you.
Yes.
You, and you specifically, though, not just in the general, but I wanna thank you specifically for what you've done. I mean, not just with the tornadoes, but everything. Like, you're just, we, we just couldn't be more blessed to have somebody like you on our staff.
EMA Director of the Year, sir.
EMA Director of the Year for the state of Georgia. Come on.
Glenn, do we, um, talking about po- popping things out, do we have the ability to, I mean, I know you say you got this with a grant, but do we have the abil- ability to, to reapply for the same kind of grant that would make sure it's community, for community use as opposed to that? And then the other hand is, this is a good opportunity to look at the opioid funds in terms of trying to grow what it is that, that, that we're trying to do. When we teach, when we're teaching people what to do, and I guess I'm trying to ask, is there a liability in us having somebody to, to give a person Narcan for care? You know, like the Good Samaritan Act, you can't get hurt if you try not to do any harm, but I'm just trying to understand our, our reasoning behind feeling like each person needs to have a course on how to give Narcan.
And that would be, that would be why, because, um, without appropriate training, then if something were to go wrong, that, that would be the first question that someone would ask, is were you trained in how to administer this particular drug? And if the answer is no, then that does not look good for us.
Okay, 'cause I, like I said, you pop the thing. So, and I understand that, but I was trying to figure out why it was that we needed to feel like we needed to have something on paper in order to do, to do that.
Well, be- because of the state law, um, it, it's, it's prudent for us to, to actually put a policy in place, and, um, the, the, the grant that allows for the training is, is just the cherry on top of that.
Will this, will your training classes be in-person or virtual?
Um, there, there is both options, and so we're, I was gonna get with staff to see. Definitely do the virtual, and then, uh, we would do in-person as needed or requested.
Are we gonna require all employees to be aware?
Aware, yes, ma'am. Uh, but that actually carries us to that next conversation that you were just having. The more people we train, especially for our employees, the more it is distributed out to our community because, um, one of the great things that we have about our staff is they share with their neighbors what's going on with our community. So, I, I'm very interested in Glenn providing on-hand training, uh, in-person training, uh, because that helps us spread the information farther out to our community. And then you're right, we have an opportunity to utilize some of the funding from our opioid monies to, uh, provide some form of either training or some Narcan out-
Medication to the community.
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that, that's all I had, Glenn.
Okay. All right. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Well done, Glenn. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your support.
Item number three. Consider approval of the memorandum of understanding between the Spalding County Water and Sewer Facility Authority and the Spalding County for Public Infrastructure Planning. Next on the agenda this evening is for us to consider a memorandum of understanding between the Water Authority and us. Uh, we heard this item a few months back, and now the Water Authority is asking us to consider agreeing with the MOU and signing this document. General Manager Johnson?
So, what you're, what you're looking at is a revised MOU, that we took the, the recommendations and the comments today and put forward, and what you're looking at is the revised document. I tracked the changes, so you could see the exact language that was put in. So, Commissioner Dutton, did you?
I did. I think it was great.
Awesome.
But you, you saw some of the, it might sound like a nuance, but that's actually pretty fundamental, like-
No, and all it does is just, it highlights the partnership, so-
Right.
It, it's, it's our job to present a, a good business plan, and if it goes along with the comp plan, which it should, because that's the plan we're using, it's a no-brainer. So the onus is on us to, to put forth a, a good business plan that provides value to the, this-
All right.
Resident.
Staff recommendation?
Staff recommendation is that we move forward, yes, sir.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
You don't have a motion, ma'am.
Okay, okay, good.
I'm, I'm motion approved.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I'm, I was gonna ask, 'cause county attorney, you've signed off on this, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, I, I just want to say that many of us sitting up here are still gun-shy from our relationship with the city of Griffin, which we have generally tried to mend. But this is an opportunity for us to have an equal, uh, partnership, um, with the Water Authority and not be based on us trying to look to see who's trying to get us. So, so I, I, I mean, I, as having been here this long, understand that you can only have collaboration with someone if you have trust on the table. So the same way that they're trying to trust us is the same way that we need to try to trust them because we can't move forward if we're going in different directions. Um, I think this would be an opportunity for the county to move forward econ- uh, economically. The longer we wait, the longer it takes to happen, so, that's all I got.
Well, I can appreciate us, us dotting our i's and crossing our t's-
Absolutely.
-as well as what Commissioner Flowers-Taylor said, 'cause we've gotta do that to protect our county.
I, I don't wanna be clear that my motion was to approve it as amended as presented tonight, just-
Okay, with the red light.
Assume that with all the-
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero. Thank you, General Manager. We appreciate your hard work on this.
Thank you.
Item number four, revised building permit fee schedule per House Bill four sixty-one. In July of this year, the state enacted a law that caused us to redefine how we charge for building permit fees, which is House Bill four sixty-one. We discussed this item during our workshop this afternoon, but Director Allen would be pleased to share with you any highlights or anything else that he thinks needs to be before we vote.
Okay, as Chairman Davis said, we did discuss this this afternoon at the workshop. Uh, basically, the valuation system we use now is no longer valid due to state law effective July first. Um, the, uh, new construction additions, major renovations over seventy-five thousand dollars will be subject to a provided rate table, which is based on the occupancy group for the building and the construction type. Uh, renovations below that number are based on another table here that was provided, uh, that sets the, um, permit fee as well as the plan review fee. And other permits are allowed to be a flat fee, such as a standalone electrical permit, a roof permit, a minor construction permits of that type, so those are flat fees now. So we have fully revised the, uh, fee schedule we had based on state law and, uh, simplifying a few fees, making them flat fees. and uh simplifying a few fees, making them flat fees instead of based on things like amps and the tonnage rate and things of that nature. So you have before you the uh revised fee schedule that complies with state law and is also simplified in a couple of areas.
I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second, discussion?
Yes, David, um I know you you talked to us about this today. But help me understand, so everybody in the state has to follow these rules in terms of planning and development and permitting? I guess my question would be, we were already at a place where we said our permitting was so much less than everybody surrounding us. Does this bring us to some level? Because you know, we were here and everybody else was permitting costs was here. So I mean, did we go to here or did we just go to here?
It definitely levels it out, as I said before in the workshop. Um the value is not the greatest way to measure these, cause you can just accept on face value, excuse the pun, their evaluation of it. And this is based on square footage, which is a lot more quantifiable and definite for sure. So it definitely puts us up without being, you know, total sticker shock on the the applicant, so.
What what it, so and if if the property or the work, I guess, not the property is worth seventy-five thousand dollars, it's if the work to be done. So if the work is less than seventy-five thousand dollars, what are the rules that we're using? We're not using square footage, you said that we're using.
It's still based on square footage, yes ma'am, but it's not based on, there's a very comp- for things over seventy-five thousand, there's a very complex table that will be built into the software. We won't have to figure it out.
Okay.
The things below that seventy-five thousand level is based on this uh other chart provided in your thing, minor residential and commercial renovations. And it basically gives a a range of square footages, what the building fee should be for that. And then the plan review fee is a percentage of that, so it's.
So I would, if I were a contractor, I know, um I could go online and look and see what it would cost. If I know what I'm building, I could see approximately what it should, my permitting cost is gonna be.
We we can provide that, yes ma'am. And and most contractors, uh some places are already doing this. So they should be familiar with it, the local contractors. Uh we will calculate it for them before they get their permit issued. But you can also see that we'll put these tables available where they can see it for themselves as well.
It used to, it used to be all of electricity and all these different pieces instead of just one thing's square footage.
It makes sense, it makes sense.
Okay.
That's all I had.
You do.
All right, I'll, any, yes, go ahead.
So this goes back to the state. I I just think builders must have an amazing lobby.
Oh, wow.
All right, cause they get in there and they go, we need to not allow the locals to zone. And the state goes, yeah, that sounds like a great idea. And what, we need to set these as the building standards and they're nothing to lean to, so the big bad wolf can blow them down. And then uh you know, they come in with with stuff like this, oh, we're getting overcharged, they can't even charge us. And then we see, again, even a broke clock is right twice a day, we see pictures like we've faced tonight. Where we're gonna need, I mean, uh if we even put in a red light there, much less a roundabout, that's a lot of money. That's a lot of zeros behind a lot of money. And yet now they're gonna pay essentially a reduced amount, which is why, once again, I come in and say, uh impact fees, impact fees, impact fees. Oh, well, if they're, if they're gonna pay it here, now they don't, they won't build, they'll go to Henry County. That's not true, that's not true. They're gonna come here anyway. And here we are talking about uh moratoriums and stuff because we're we're overloaded. Okay, then great, then 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 great. Then maybe this, maybe it does slow them down, maybe maybe one or two do go, well, I'm gonna build in this county instead of that one. Great, great, you know, we're we're having how many wrecks at this one intersection? And do we have the money to to put a roundabout there? We we do not, we do not.
So talking, uh do it.
And I'm just, I I again, what we're, what we're talking about is not the actual cost. We're talking about the relative cost based on other counties. So while this might be a raise for us, uh as far as the actual fees, yeah, yeah, so it again, we use these not for necessarily just the dollar amount that they raise, but for uh.
Covering cost.
Right, the covering of costs, but the 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 policy shifting, how it helps people to al- align and move things here, the things that we want, and prevent the stuff that we don't want. So now the state has come through, it made this uniform, uh it sounds good on paper, much like some of the other ballot initiatives. And uh are are probably gonna be bad ideas.
Okay.
Motion and a second, sir.
I have a motion, anybody else for a discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, thank you. Uh item number five. Adoption of the twenty twenty-four Capital Improvement Element, CIE, update and Community Work Program, CWP, update for Spalding County. Several months ago, the Board of Commissioners voted in support of adopting the twenty twenty-four Capital Improvement Element update. The staff received a final approval to move forward with our CIE from the depart- uh Georgia Department of Community Affairs and is now in the final steps. The final step is for us to adopt the resolution. Do I have a motion to adopt?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to adopt the uh CIE twenty twenty-four and the update of the Community Work Plan.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I I'll second, this is the list of stuff that we can build with impact fees, right? This, I I I wanna point again to the the library. I think we need some improvements over there. Uh I go there all the time with my kids and there's vines in the stream there just choking our our trees out. And there's a big area that's that's underutilized. We could have gazebos, gardens, all kinds of, in- increased parking. Um I I I think for next year, we need to look into adding a slot there. Um and we could get with the the folks at the library and kinda talk about, hey, we're, you know, maybe a, you know, touch learning gardens, these kind of things down there, I I think there's a.
Can that be a partnership maybe with the Board of Education?
That's a great idea.
Since we're talking about the library?
I was thinking of a a grant, because the state pers- state partially funds uh the library.
Right, right, right.
But we can ask for a grant, see if the, we have a grant writer, let's see if we have, can get a grant to be able to do some of that stuff.
And also, um Commissioner Dutton, with the impact fees, it is based on how much of an impact it has. So so for some reason, leisure services and public works are much more weighted than than the library. And I'm sure that that is a for- there is a formula based on that. And it may have, very well have something to do with um the fact that it has funding from the state. But usually in a year, we don't collect more than about fi- fifty thousand dollars for impact fees in the library.
In the library, yeah.
In the library fund, yes ma'am.
Right, so so you know, it would have to be something we would have to try to initiate on ourselves or to try to partner with somebody.
But but if we had a plan for, well, we're gonna put a garden, a gazebo, and some new trees and some nice whatever, uh you know, nobody wants their kid sitting in a touch garden next to a highway, so you could put a s- a screen up there, you know what I'm saying, this kind of thing. Um but if you, if we had that on paper, then we could look for grants to fund it. Then we could look for partners with the community to fund it. Then we could uh, you know, get with um, you know, the library has, you know, friends of the library, that kind of stuff, to to go and to to sort of have a have a target. As opposed to just, you know, new books or kind of supplies or something, you know what I'm saying? But actually like, hey, how do we make the library even more robust than you?
So Commissioner Dutton, one of the last revisions we did last month, and you'll see it on the Community Work Program, is expansion of the library parking lot, so that is on there.
Great, 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 great.
This time, we can certainly talk about the touch gardens and things for next year, so.
Yeah, yeah, and that's what I'm saying is, between now and us passing this next year, cause we gotta do it every year.
Right.
Uh I I'd love to, and I'd love to be a part of that conversation.
Okay.
My kids would be mad at me if I wasn't, so.
Good, all right, any other discussion? All those in fa-
I just need Chairman Davis and Dr. Litt better to sign these two documents for.
Once they approve.
We gotta vote on it.
Yeah. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero. Now David, if you bring those up, we'll take care of, taking care of that part, okay. Let me see where I am, excuse me. Uh all right. Item number eight. Old Business Lift From The Ta- Table, The Fairmont Heritage Heritage Park Gym Conceptual Plan for consideration for funding and construction. At our last meeting, the staff requested that we table the conceptual plan for the Fairmont Heritage Park Gym. Staff is now ready for us to move forward with consideration. Do I have a motion to lift the item from the table?
Motion to lift.
And a motion and a second, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion is carried. During this afternoon's workshop, we had the opportunity to hear from uh Architect Kyle Epstein about the proposed plan to move forward with this, the last project of the twenty sixteen Sploths. Mr. Epstein, could you please share any highlights from the proposal?
Uh I think Mr. Epstein left uh earlier this evening, sorry about that.
And this this wasn't the last project, this is the last part of the last project. We we started this project uh a while ago, the first part of it. And then the the second part of it, the Housing Authority is taking point on. And this is sort of the the third part of it that we're we're finally getting to, and we're excited about doing it.
All right, do I have a motion to approve?
Uh Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve the conceptual plan and the funding thereof.
I have a motion and I have a second, any more discussion?
I I I I wanna discuss here, but I'm I'm looking for blue hats to wag their heads like this. That they're, that they're, that, okay, okay, all right. I don't wanna do anything with y'all's gym that you didn't want us to, so I'm getting, I'm getting plenty, I'm getting. Uh that's right, that's right, that's right. I, that's right, I got one of those hats too, that's right, that's right. All right, absolutely, we're all, we're all good.
Right, I know that there's been some meetings on this, we're all, as far as we're up, everybody that we know in the community is all for the way we're doing this.
We have, we have had several stakeholder meetings with the alumni members, other people who are not necessarily with it, but who had an interest in it. And uh it was very, received very well. There were some small things that people wanted to do to change, and that was presented to us tonight. So I feel like the community will look at it as an asset and it will help, certainly help that community to be able to re- re- rejuvenate and have a place in the community where people can assemble or or anything. So yeah, I think that people are, that I've talked to are okay with these plans.
Me too.
All right, my community, you can see this is coming to fruition, so.
Yeah.
Thank you for all that you've done for us, it's brilliant.
All right, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries. All right, item number nine, Report of the County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um I'll make my remarks brief this evening. Uh just wanted to remind everyone that tomorrow is Election Day, so please go and vote. Um also, the north side, sorry, the North Hill Street and Spalding uh street sidewalk projects continue with land acquisition. Uh this is going to take us a bit to get all the land acquired for the sidewalks for both of these locations. Uh we're expecting that the completion of this phase of the project will um will take us most likely until the end of first quarter of next year. Uh could take us into summer just for the land acquisition. Um Steve is working very, very diligently to meet with all of the land owners and move us forward with uh with that project. So kudos to, kudos to him. Um do want to share an important notice, Fannin Road and Steel Road, the intersection of of that uh area will be closed tomorrow from eight until four. Uh there, the road department is having to put in a cross drain replacement. Um the the road has suffered some damage over the last week. Uh unexpected damage, it started to wash out underneath uh with the rain that we've got projected coming in toward the the end of this week. Uh that could pose some problems if we didn't jump on it. So the team is working diligently to finalize that cross drain uh installation. Also, I wanna say thank you to RSM for the work that they did on our forensic audit. Uh they completed this evening with the presentation that you had the opportunity to see at our workshop and provided some uh some valuable information and some recommendations for us to move forward. So I just wanna say thank you to them. Finally, I do wanna share with you that uh we are still in need of many people coming to make adoptions at our animal shelter. Uh had the chance to spend some time with the Director of the Animal Shelter this morning. We took in unfortunately forty-two dogs over the last seven days from evictions and criminal um activities that were going on. And those forty-two dogs that were brought in are now required to be housed until the criminal cases are complete. Uh that takes our population at the animal shelter to one hundred and fifty dogs and thirty-four cats. Um so i- if if our community could help us, we desperately need uh a adoptive parents of fur babies to come in, uh adopt our animals out of the animal shelter. Um Mr. Chair, that's all I have this evening.
Uh Deputy County Manager? Commissioner Johnson?
I just wanna thank everyone once again for the words, the kind words uh that was spoken tonight, it really means a whole lot. Thank you all for the county for this beautiful um.
Apple?
Whatever you call it, gavel, it's heavy too. Um I'm gonna miss this, and I'm gonna miss you all, but like Steve said, we got to vote tomorrow. So I wanna say good luck already to District Three. Uh you're gonna have another representative, and we're gonna find out who that is tomorrow. So I wish both the gentlemen much luck.
Thank you. Commissioner Dutton?
I I just wanna send even more love towards Commissioner Johnson. Uh I tease her all the time, and she's my favorite Democrat, but uh she, she's up here. She's up here doing the right thing. Not the party line thing, not the liberal thing, not the conservative thing, but doing the right thing. Seeking first to understand, then seeking to be understood. And um uh I know that, you know, come January, we won't, we won't have you up here anymore. But judging by past experiences with District Three, uh there's still plenty of appointments that we can put you on. Plenty of boards, uh that we could uh use your experience on. And I wanna echo your sentiments as well, go and vote. Uh you know, there's the the three boxes that are are fundamental rights, and this is the the best one to use. So go and vote. Um uh it's, I I had a friend call me the other day and say, I just, I, you know, I don't like any of them, I'm not voting for anybody. What? I don't think it's worth, go and vote, are you kidding me? There are literally billions of people around the world that don't have the chance to vote for their leaders. Like it, imagine how amazingly lucky we are. You know what I mean? Um I I I wanna talk about the animal shelter real quick too, since you brought that up. Um there is a special prosecutor that actually wrote the law in, that changed animal cruelty to just being a misdemeanor to now it's, it can be a felony. Uh and now she travels the state, uh still working for the state as a prosecutor for those crimes. Uh we need to get a hold of her, we need to get her down here. And I I'm, I know this is gonna sound bad coming from a criminal defense attorney, but with how many dogs this week were criminal cases? Why? Because, you know, well, I guess I'll just take my dog, I can do whatever I want. No, we need to put some of these folks uh uh in a place where they're gonna learn real, real quick lessons about how not to abuse animals. And uh we need to do it quick, fast, and in a hurry. Um we need to be searching, uh seeking restitution for every dime it cost us, for every single one of these dogs, for every single one of these defendants, in addition to their fines and fees. Um I I, I'm sorry, but the taxpayers are paying the bill for these people's criminal activity, and it needs to not go unnoticed. We need to do everything we can to set a nice precedent here in Spalding County that people in Spalding County, throughout the county, will know that they can't get away with doing what is happening with some of these animals. That it's not okay, that we're not gonna let it slide.
Okay, all right, Commissioner Flowers Taylor?
Um I'm really still waiting for Steve to hear what is, what the update is on Jewel Drive. Um still don't know where that that situation stands. Um also wanted to ask you about what the official right-of-way distance is on North Hill Street. Because my understanding is that we, the right-of-way belongs to us on both sides. And so I'm just kinda wondering if if we're talking about more space than whatever that would be. I mean, I don't know if the right-of- I mean, I don't know if the right of way is ten feet there or if it's twenty feet, but, um, yeah, I I would be concerned about that, because if they are still trying to do property acquisition, I'm just really trying to figure out where that 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 would be. Because the sidewalk is gonna go up one side of the street, and then there's gonna be a crossing for it to complete and go over that. Okay, I just wanna know what's going on with that. Also, I'm go- going to say that, um, recently I was in Arizona, and they had this app advertisement on television where their shelter was doing a special for puppies only, and adoptions were half price up until, um, up until Christmas or something like that. But, um, that may be an opportunity for us to talk, um, with our shelter director and see if if we can kind of think out of the box about trying to, you know, provide whatever people need to be able to adopt.
The alternatives are not very good.
Well, well, yeah, that's what I'm saying. I mean, I I I can't remember if it's sixty or seventy or whatever, but at the end of the day, we want the animals to find a home. And if if, you know, cutting the price to allow that to happen for a certain group of animals, we we just need to make something happen. I, um, I have already picked out some stuff to make Rita do when she's not, um.
I think we all have lists for that.
A commissioner.
Keep her on that main street.
I got some for ya.
So, yeah, um, and I wanted to to verify for us, that that, well, first of all, we're having the airport stakeholders meeting, and we'll need to for sure verify that date, whether it's going to be on the fourteenth and what time. And the other thing is that there is a meeting that'll be held on the thirteenth. It is archway meeting for, to create a task force for addiction. How to talk about addiction, how addiction is affecting our community, whether or not the funds that we've gotten from the opioid settlement can be used to help promote, um, you know, wha- whatever. But it's an opportunity for anybody in this community to be able to come in and hear what's going on and come up with some solutions that that we can use to try and, um, just help people to exist when they have friends or family members that are experiencing, um, addiction on a daily basis. So the public is invited to that. We, and it's going to be the thirteenth at two o'clock.
Wait.
That twelfth, thirteenth, and fourteenth's got me messed up, but, um, and it'll be here at the annex, and it'll be led by the UGA, uh, archway professional.
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock, two o'clock on the thirteenth. So if you would like to share, or you know someone who works in recovery, runs a halfway house, a three-quarter house, tell them that this may be an opportunity for them to be able to share what they think needs to happen in this community to fight drug addiction.
Ma'am, I think it's at UGA, at the Flint Building, the.
It is, it's at the Flint Building, eleven oh nine Experiment Street.
Okay, UGA on the thirteenth at.
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock.
Two P M. All right, then I guess I will be there.
Thank you. Okay, Vice Chair?
Just like everybody else, it's an honor to have sat up here with you, Ms. Rita. I, comparing myself to all the other ones up here, uh, me and you are the most alike.
We are.
Me and you've made some tough decisions. It went totally against everything the other ones were sitting for here, but it's been, uh, it's been great, and I'm still mad at you. Flack. Uh, I I talked to Steve earlier about this. I'm gonna put it in email form, but I'm not gonna mention the name of a, this trailer park. But it's it's appalling at some of the things that's going on up there.
Yeah.
I mean, I I've gotten several emails about, um, our code enforcement doing their job and going up there and making, uh, certain structures uninhabitable and putting and stamping it, and the next day, somebody come up to there and tearing it off and moving other people in after they moved other people out. I'm hoping we're keeping records of all this, because it is my goal to either clean it up or shut it down. And I would love to see that happen before I'm out of, before I'm like, Ms. Rita and I leave. That's gonna be my goal. Because everything that we were, uh, they stood up here in front of us and told it was a lie, and none of it's happened. Um, and it's just appalling at some of the stuff that's going on up there. So we got to stay on top of it.
Yes, sir.
Is that it?
That's it.
First, I'd like to make the same comment, uh, most of people have about voting. I really don't care who you vote for, just as long as you vote. My dad told me when I was, uh, twenty-one, uh, if you don't vote, don't bitch. Oh, excuse me. If you don't vote, don't talk fat. So I have maintained that for rest of my life, so, uh, yes. If you all remember, uh, the Board of Elections came to us and said we were probably gonna have four-hour lines waiting in line for us to vote, uh, because of our ability to take that bull by the horn, finding the money to be able to redo that, move folks out to be able to do that, that, uh, county manager was able to do. As far as I know, about fifty minutes was as men- much time as anybody had to spend in line, and a number of people were able to just about walk in after the first week. So, uh, hats off to the Board of Elections for what they did, and pat on the back to the Board of Commissioners for, uh, finding the money to be able to to do that. Uh, I'd like to also make a comment about, uh, uh, the work group that, uh, Commissioner Flowers Taylor talked about. We have an issue inside this county, uh, with, uh, mental health. And, uh, we've gotta take a stand and start doing something about it. Sometimes that's baby steps, but the first part of it is education, people understanding what's, what can be done, what needs to be done to be able to talk about it. It, uh, uh, most people don't wanna talk about mental health. We sure can talk about, I've got bad knees, I've got, uh, diabetes, but, uh, when you wanna talk about, uh, I'm having depression. No, no, we're not talking about that. We've gotta make it so it's okay to be able to talk about that and then get treated for it all the way around. Uh, last, I want to, uh, uh, say a comment first to Rita. Thank you. Some of, I had a couple of people ask me, why are we doing it tonight when we've got a ways to go? Two or three things, if you wanna know the truth. First, uh, because tomorrow we'll know who Rita's replacements are, uh, who Rita's replacement is. And, uh, uh, that would put her in the lame duck, and we didn't wanna do that one where she was in the lame duck mode. Secondly, if we waited to do it in late December, uh, we wanted this to be a bigger surprise and, uh, catch her off guard and have the love that we feel for her, uh, to be felt for her to be able to do it. The Commissioners will do something a little bit later for you on that. But thank you to the county manager for pulling all of this together, getting people to come here and talk and show the love. It is not every time that we do that, and it shows great, uh, empathy towards, uh, Rita and your ability to pull it all together, uh, to do that. Your staff, however that works, to be able to do that. With that, uh, any other comments? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a second. All those in favor, raise your hand.